We're ready.
Okay, good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome everyone to the April 22nd, 2021 meeting of the Havener Township Planning and Commission. And today is Earth Day.
Wow.
So anyhow, Kelly, could you call roll, please?
Mr. Capuzzi.
Kelly, roll.
Yeah, did I'm sorry, was my mic not on?
I don't know.
Mr. Capuzzi.
Present.
Mr. Reardon.
Here.
Ms. Dobbs.
Here.
Mr. Shannon.
Here.
Mr. Figueroa Mundo.
Here.
Mr. Garrett.
Here.
And Ms. Phillips.
Here.
Okay, I'd like to ask everyone to join me with the reciting of the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag.
Of the United States of America.
And to the Republic.
For its stance.
And one nation.
One nation.
Under God.
Under God.
Indivisible. With liberty.
Liberty.
Justice for all. Thank you for that. And I have one more request. I asked that the members of Planning Commission observe a moment of silence in memory of Commissioner Andy Lewis, who tragically passed away this past week. Thank you for that.
Andy was a friend as well as our, my commissioner and our commissioner. And it's a real, real loss, as you all know.
It's interesting that I was speaking with him the day before his illness began. I've been working with upon a project with him for several months and was absolutely flabbergasted by the speed with which this disease took him. And also with, to say that he, you know, we have the reserve the way it is today because in large part because of what Andy Lewis did. He was, he's really active and also in some of the stuff that just happened tonight, which is the next item that comes up on the, on the, he was very much in favor of the new walkway and he was very much in favor of the, of getting 833 back to its original zoning. So it's kind of apropos that, that we remember him tonight.
Thank you, David and Chuck. Our first item on the agenda is the application of a grant to the PA Department of Conservation Natural Resources for a walking path at Polo Field. And Kelly, I believe you're going to fill us in on that, correct?
I'm gonna do my best in lieu of a representative, so bear with me. The Recreation Department was seeking a grant to construct a five foot wide walkway that's approximately a half of a mile long around the Polo Field with a pervious material. And that's, I mean, that's, that's essentially the, the long and short of it.
I had a quick discussion with Chuck Faulkner today about this, and he mentioned that there are various or several contributors to this project, one of which is Lower Marion Township.
Correct. I believe, and somebody can correct me if I'm wrong, but Lower Marion and Havener Township are both leaseholders of Polo Field from the Polo Field Playfield Association.
Okay, great. I'll open it up for discussion. Does anybody have any questions or comments they want to make about this grant application?
I do. Go ahead. Go ahead.
No, I was just, I was just curious about the cost that's being associated with putting this path in.
Well, the grant itself is for $160,000. And the contribution, I am not certain. Probably should have double checked that before the meeting. Yeah, I honestly, I don't, I don't 100% know. It should be with the documents that, or the application that I provided to the board. But.
I'm not sure, but it might be in that neighborhood. Like maybe 170 or in that range. I'd have to pull out the, the proposal.
Okay, I was just curious. And what, what are they going to start?
I'm sorry, the total project cost was 300,020, I'm sorry, $325,000.
So it's 165.
So this is about half of the construction cost.
Right.
And there's, there's, I know Lower Marion Township is contributing. I think there's a couple of local community groups that are contributing, so.
Brinford Civic Association has contributed, I believe, 6,500, or I could be wrong, but I think that's the number that I read just most recently.
Okay. And apparently, Rob, this project was put out for bid back in 2019, but for whatever reason, they never followed through with construction. So this is a rehab or re-up of a previous project. That's why the plans are as detailed as they are, I guess. They're using drawings from back to 2019.
Okay, we have any information on the maintenance costs? I didn't see that in the, in the proposal.
Excuse me.
I, I don't have any, David, now.
And also on that contribution of the, of the Brinford Civic Association, as far as I know, the Brinford, I've been in the, I haven't been active lately, partly because I'm on the commission, but I don't think the Brinford Civic Association has ever had that kind of money.
It's also, it's combined with the, I'm sorry, it's combined with the Friends of the Polo Field, okay, slash Brinford Civic Association. And they said 70% of all the respondents support the pass, but they also support the project financially with a $9,700 pledge, letter of support and letter of commitment included with the thing. It's in that separate pages that we received. Mainline Health and Havener Township Civic Council. And I'm looking at Lower Marion Township. They've jointly operated the Polo Field since 1944. Letter of support and commitment was also included from Lower Marion Township. The percentage of match was 52.25, 22%. And I don't know how much Lower Marion is adding into it as well.
Kelly?
Yes.
On the letter, go ahead, sorry. I just have a clarification. On the letters we requested, but apparently do not have the attachments referenced in the proposal.
For, for just some clarification on what we're reviewing here?
I'd like to see those before I vote, but.
Okay, but to clarify what this review is, is that is the application, is this project in keeping with the comprehensive plan? We, we aren't here to review the grant entirely. The Board of Commissioners have already done that. We're making a recommendation based on whether this follows what the comprehensive plan has recommended for Polo Field.
I would not define our role that narrowly, but that's another issue. But we are making a recommendation, and I would like to see the documents before I make a recommendation. Even as to whether or not it's consistent with the comprehensive plan. I think understanding the, what the communities' views are as part of our evaluation. If it's a mere technical question, isn't violating the comprehensive plan, then we don't have much of a role. But that, I don't believe that's the plan.
That is what most grants request.
May I get your pardon?
The grants specifically request that the Planning Commission make a recommendation on whether the project is in keeping with the comprehensive plan.
Okay.
Not whether the budget or any of those other things, you know, are necessarily relevant in this recommendation specifically.
Well.
Kelly?
We should decide what's relevant, what we feel is important in keeping with the comprehensive plan, which I'll come back to, but I don't want to go back and forth.
Kelly, may I speak? I had a piece of fact.
Okay, yeah, sure.
Yes.
My name is Kathy Case. I'm the Chairman of the Polo Field Committee and on the Executive Board of the Brinford Civic Association. The $9,700 is from the Havener Township Civic Council, and it was donated by Andy Lewis. It's not part of the Brinford Civic Accounts Association budget. However, he apparently, although nobody knows specifically, told several people he'd like it to go toward the path. And, but at the time he donated it, there was not a treasury of the Brinford Civic Association. So that's where the $9,700 came from. It's, we don't have that money in our budget at the Civic Association because we're just getting restarted. And I believe the contribution from each township was to be $80,000 to match the grant.
Thank you for that.
Yeah.
Thank you for that information, Kathy.
So Kelly, just to clarify, so what do you need from us tonight, then? Is just a recommendation to be included in the grant application package as the recommendation from the Planning Commission, correct?
Correct, thank you.
Okay. So I live right across the street from this. I find it consistent with the comprehensive plan. And I, on a personal level, I'm looking forward to having a walking trail. We use the walking trail on Preston all the time. It has been extraordinarily well-used, especially this past year. I don't really use the Polo Field very much because I don't have kids that play on the field. So there's really no need for me to be on it. And a walking path would certainly open it up. So I wholeheartedly support the grant application, and I find it consistent with the comprehensive plan. I do have some questions about long-term maintenance. I saw in the grant package that we will be utilizing Lower Marion's vacuum machine. I know porous pavement needs consistent vacuuming to remove sediments that clog it and make it not function as a pervious pavement. But then I also was just curious if, if you're able to answer that now, what the winter maintenance plan is, only because I know that we don't get the paths on Preston Field shovel during the winter time. And so I'm wondering if that's going to be the same for the Polo Field Trail as well.
It is my understanding that they will not be doing any snow maintenance on the, on the path. As far as maintenance go, we are deeply aware that, that the porous pavers and porous concrete does need maintenance, which is why we actually do not allow it to be credited in our zoning code. So that is something that, that, you know, we are, we are working with Lower Marion to, you know, make sure it happens and make sure it is maintained. Because I hate, we, I personally don't, don't care for, you know, do as I say, not as I do situations. And, you know, maintain, making sure that that, that area is maintained is, is important.
Anyone else with a question or comment?
I, I do.
Okay.
By my background, I also live not adjacent, but two steps from the Polo Field and Preston Field. For over, maybe I sound a little like Charles Reardon, not, not quite, I'm happy to say. Not that venerable a resident, but venerable, but not here that long. I've been walking, when I take the train into town, which I've done for over 30 years, I, my shortcut is across the Polo Field. So I like to walk across in the morning and I like to come back in the evening and appreciate. For some seasons, it's been my main contact with nature. And since the virus, I've been, since the COVID, I've been walking the field pretty regularly. And also walking the path around, around the Preston Field that Maggie mentioned. The, because of my immediate concerns and as, as a witness, I was, I wasn't sure if I should be, as a commissioner as well. So I called Jim Byrne and I asked him, is it okay for me to comment on a field that I use a lot? And he said, sure, it's not a conflict. And in fact, you're on the board to, of commissioners to, of the Planning Commission to bring in community sentiment and your own sentiment as, as a member of the community. And I also asked him about the scope of our review. And he said, well, you're making recommendations and they need not be merely, if I understood what you were saying, they need not be limited to, to formate of the plan. It may be that we have to make a decision on that, but we can also say other things if we have other concerns, because the commissioner has looked to us for at least advice or guidance. So in any event, but I'm happy to say there's no conflict and I can speak to the issue. I had a number of concerns about the, the proposal. One was that we don't have the exhibits, we don't have the attachments that are referred to. And I think we should have them before we make a decision. I'm concerned about a number of, it just seems like the, the proposal, I think the biggest one is, and I think this relates to the comprehensive plan. As Maggie said, there's a very nice path that goes around the Preston Field. The proposal makes no mention of, has a picture, but it doesn't say anything about the use of that field. That field is, you know, the distance, 50 yards, 100 yards from the Polo Field. So this neighborhood is already served by a very nice path that goes around Preston Field. It is also served to, well, in good times, by the Havener Nature Trail. The, it seemed to me that part of planning is, is the neighborhood, do we need another path? I'm trying to have an open mind on that, but it's, I think that should be addressed by the plan proposal. Without that, oh, and another thing about that, the field, the Preston Field path, but this, this, the existing proposal creates a very strong impression that one of the main reasons for this path is for the institutions in the area. Bryn Mawr and, what's it called? The one across the street, the Bryn Mawr Terrace, the, the nursing home.
Harkham, Harkham College?
No, the nursing home.
Oh, the terrace, yeah.
Bryn Mawr Terrace on Railroad. Bryn Mawr Terrace on Railroad is directly opposite Preston Field. If a person is disabled or in a wheelchair or needs an assistant, it's much easier to walk across the street and onto the Preston Field than around that field. It would be farther and more, I just don't see the need. We're looking at all at necessity and whether the, the expense is justified and whether the community is adequately served without a path. It seems to me the proposal, the proposal ought to talk about, there's an existing path that very well serves Bryn Mawr Terrace and is also available for Bryn Mawr Hospital or Rehab or whatever. So I'm not sure what, I think that's a big gap in what we have in front of us now. And I'm uncomfortable voting on it without hearing more from Parks and Recreation or Bryn Mawr Terrace that would justify the expense and, and the, and the path. Personally, there's nothing stopping Maggie or anyone else from walking around the Polo Field. It's a lovely walk. It's green. It's natural. The comprehensive plan talks about natural. Talks about, and this proposal talks about a nature path, but it's not, it justifies itself as a nature path, but it's not a nature path. It's a path. Another concern, I like walking around. Another concern I have is, once we have a, I, I had a question for the people putting in the path as to whether the surface, which they say is going to be made with tires. What, I, I've been on paths that are sort of spongy and it's nice for walking and bouncy, but some of them also harden. And if it hardens sufficiently, it becomes a path for bikes and skateboarders and rollerbladers. And I'm not sure that's a, consistent with having a good walking path for the neighborhood and for safety. Also on the same, sorry, I'm taking off a list of things that concern me. Another is safety and, and losing the natural beauty, natural calm that I've come to appreciate in the Polo Field, at least the calm when it's not multiple soccer games going on, which is also a nice, a nice part of the field. I'm concerned about the safety. It's very close. There's another question I have for the proposal and for Parks and Recreation. It runs very close to baseball fields and soccer fields. And when people are standing around watching a game or walking nearby on the grass, I think they pay attention. Inviting them onto a path which are, which is very close to the field and where kids practice pitching on the side and hit foul balls pretty regularly or balls get thrown wildly toward first base. I think that's a danger for people who are invited to walk on the path and may not be paying close attention to the game. What else? There's more, but it's probably just really concerned about the lack of accurate information in the proposal and the lack of complete information in the proposal. That's my main. And, well, and money for maintenance and township, whatever the amount incurring that cost. So I do think as part of a plan, but part of our responsibility should be to say this a need in the community. Is this a need that's already met? It's kind of like having two kidney machines in Pike County, Pennsylvania. You don't need two kidney machines. Do we need two pads in, within a block of each other in Havener Township? So there's always more, but that's what I, comes to mind primarily.
Well, I don't.
I do have one more point, which is, I, I, there has not been, to my knowledge, there has not been a general meeting of the Brinford Civic Association on this issue. I know there's people who are opposed. I know there are people who are for. I know there was a survey and I know the survey results voted in favor. But a survey with, you know, do you like the idea of a path? Well, I think everyone likes the idea of a path. But that's not the same as a pros and cons being presented in a meeting where people in the community come and state their views. I know there's some, I'm talking to people. I know there's some opposition. And I know there's some people who think it's a great idea. But I think before we say the Brinford Civic Association or the Brinford people are in favor, I'd like to have a little more input from the community. Again, I think that's a way in which this proposal is, doesn't present an accurate picture.
Okay, I, I don't know necessarily that we have any authority or, or whatever to comment on design aspects of the, of the path. I have to assume that the township engineer and whoever else is involved in the choosing of the materials and how the maintenance is to occur knows what they're doing. Okay? I would rely on their technical capabilities to make the proper decisions for the township. As far as having a second path in basically close proximity to another path, my only question there would be, what is the condition of the existing path? Is it handicap accessible? Is it, is it readily used by people who, who have handicap issues? I know for a fact, this, this project is supposed to be designed and, well, it's designed and constructed to meet ADA standards. Does anyone know what the existing Preston Field path looks like? Are there any steep grades or any, any difficulties in accessing it from a handicap accessibility standpoint?
I think it's, it's, well, I can't speak to ADA compliance, but it's easily accessible in terms of distance. As I said, it's right across the street from Bryn Mawr Terrace. In terms of ramps and things like that. It's pretty easy from the parking lot on to, maybe Maggie could speak to that. It's pretty easy.
Yeah.
Parking lot on to the, what's, what's more difficult is getting into the Polo Field. It's easy from the Polo Field parking lot, but I would think anybody who wanted to go to the Polo Field parking lot would have to drive it. So they'd have to be taken from the facility to the, I guess about quarter mile, half a mile around Railroad and then up County Line to the parking lot. And from there, it's pretty easy to get, would be easy to get on a path. It's much easier to get on a path that, at Preston Field. And that plant, that field has, it rises and falls, but not as much as Polo. To get to Polo from the ramp that would go to Railroad Avenue, which would be closer to Bryn Mawr Terrace, I would think that would be pretty tough, which is pretty steep for anyone to use that ramp.
Yeah. So I don't know what the specific grade of the Preston Field Trail is, but the only kind of accurate access to it is from the parking lot, as David mentioned. There's no sidewalks on that side of Martin. So if you can get up into the parking lot, then you can get onto the trail. Otherwise, there's no direct access points onto the trail from either Railroad or Martin. And then there's, it kind of towards where the basketball courts are and the, the swing sets heading towards Buck. There's a steeper incline heading in that direction. And I believe that's probably outside of ADA.
It sure is.
It's probably too steep to meet ADA compliance. It's over four or 5%, I'm sure, which is, I think, what ADA requires. And then it's a more gradual slope towards the north of the trail. But, you know, Polo also has some grade change to it. And it does look like the only, so you can access it from the parking lot. But in terms of like from, so I'm on Penn Street. So when I'm looking at going on to Polo Field, my access point would be kind of up at the corner of Penn and Dayton. So that could be, and it looks like we have the optional, I think the green is the optional trail.
It's, it's my understanding that only the red, is it red and blue?
Yes.
They're the only two pieces that are going to be built. The green section will not be constructed.
Yeah. So that shows up as an alternate. And that would be from a connectivity into the existing sidewalk network. That's where we actually have our connections into pre-existing concrete curved, like pedestrian sidewalks. Otherwise, we're looking at access from the parking lot and then access onto Railroad. And there's no, again, there's no sidewalk on the north side of Railroad there. There is a, a nice sidewalk on the south side adjacent to the rehabilitation center right there at the intersection. So I guess the only thing I would say too, is that if there's a, some sort of crosswalk to indicate where that entrance might be. But again, I know we're not commenting on design at this time necessarily, but in, if we're considering how ADA access would work, that would be something to consider because we do have sidewalk there. But there's only one curb cut on Railroad heading west. So we don't have an ADA curb ramp. The way that they do them now is that they have, they're, they're, they face perpendicular to their crossing. So we would need to essentially have another ADA curb ramp on the, like facing north going across Railroad right there.
Hey, thank you. Kelly, is there anything specific in the comprehensive plan that talks about the Polo Field?
Actually, there's very, very little in the comprehensive plan that references the Polo Field. It's listed in the Parks and Open Space section. the polo field. Um, it's, uh, listed in the parks and open space, uh, section. Mentions it, but barely, uh, really very little, um, description, uh, other than it is a field for active recreation.
Okay.
Um, it doesn't necessarily make any, uh, recommendations other than, you know, it, it really remaining, um, a field used for community active recreation.
Sorry, go ahead.
I was gonna say, is there anything in the plan that generally, in the comprehensive plan that generally speaks to the need in the township for additional, uh, trails or walking paths?
Um, in the ADA plan, it really doesn't, uh, recommend walking trails for recreation. There is quite a bit of language about walking trails for, um, transit purposes, um, and you know, trails for bike trails, et cetera. Um, but I, I don't know if walking trails for recreational purposes were, wasn't very, uh, popular in 1988 when that plan was written or what the case may be, but, um, it's not, um, it's, it's not something that's mentioned really in any section, um, but certainly not specific to polo field.
Kelly, um, could I add something here? Cause I'm also on the comprehensive planning committee, uh, committee for the new comprehensive plan. Um, just by chance, uh, uh, the, the, the 1988 one principally talks about the need for more baseball fields. Well, of course that's changed now, uh, because it's more soccer fields that we need rather than more baseball fields. But the, the committee that's addressing the new comprehensive plan, um, has, uh, you know, obviously that's on stall because of the pandemic, but we've had i- in that group before we, we closed down the operation, had, uh, talks about green space. Because obviously it's been a long time since 1988. They weren't talking about green space quite as much. Uh, and there will be a whole section in the new comprehensive plan on, um, issues addressing the parks and recs, because, uh, Brian Bartlett's on that group as well. Um, but it's, it's kind of, you know, ironic to say, does this meet with the comprehensive plan when the only one we have is from 1988? We're working on a new one. So I, it's a, uh, a, a, a task that I know was driven by the grant, but in fact, we have a very old comprehensive plan that isn't in keeping with modern times because as you all know, sports have changed a lot and soccer's the big thing and, and, uh, um, and pickleball courts and all sorts of various changes that were not around in 1988.
Thank you. Uh, again, uh, Kelly, is there a, a time clock on this? Is someone looking to make a submission sooner than later with this application?
I believe that the grant application has already been submitted. The Board of Commissioners did, uh, vote to approve the submission of the grant, uh, last Monday, I believe, uh, not this past Monday, the Monday prior at their regular meeting. Uh, so this would just, this would be a supplement to that grant application package. Um, so in, in that respect, no, I suppose there isn't, although I'm sure the recreation department would, uh, would like to have it sooner rather than later, if possible.
It, it sounds like this is a box that has to be checked off on an application somewhere.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Um, here's what I would recommend, or I suggest anyhow. We, we tabled this for two weeks. Hope, hopefully we'll have a meeting in two weeks. If you could, uh, glean for us some information from the application that speaks to the, the need for this, uh, walkway or this pathway and how it, uh, would be, uh, help us to make a determination whether or not it is consistent with the comprehensive plan, regardless of the age of the comprehensive plan. Uh, personally, I don't see how it hurts to have an additional walking trail, but, um, I can understand David's concern that, that we just don't, um, build things that, that aren't needed. Okay? So, um, again, if you can give us some of the information from the, uh, application that talks about justifications and things like that, so we can have a little bit more information to make a, a more informed decision.
I'm not certain that the, I mean, I'd be happy to provide whatever I can. I'm not certain that the, um, additional attachments are going to reflect any of those questions. It may be more helpful, uh, if questions were directed to the recreation department who has been, um, compiling this information and creating this application. Um, i- if it's helpful, I can certainly, uh, request that, um, someone from recreation, uh, join us at our next meeting.
That would be great.
Sure.
I think if that's, that's the best source of information, then yeah, if someone from the rec department could, could meet with us next time and, and give us a little bit more background on the need and, uh, the other details of the plan, I think that would be appreciated.
Okay.
Is that satisfactory to everyone?
That's an excellent idea, Angelo. And I just wanted to add that it's, to me, it's partly the issues I've raised. And one of the issues I raised in addition to need is you, you're changing the character of the polo field, which has been there for a long time. Um, it's green. It doesn't have skateboarders. It doesn't have bikes. It's got a lot of kids playing and a lot of people walking and enjoying it. And it's, it's green and if it ain't broke, I'm not sure we ought to be fixing, but let's talk in two weeks. Oh, Kelly, I had one more question, which is, um, is there anything in the deed? You mentioned the deed. Uh, you mentioned the ownership. Is there anything in the deed, uh, or the lease that just talks about what should or shouldn't be done at the field?
I have not seen the lease. I, I, I don't know. I was asked to bring this before the board for recommendation based on its, you know, the project in keeping with the comprehensive plan. I was not privy to every document or the, uh, any sort of part of the completion of this grant. So I don't know.
I'm not suggesting you should have drilled down on that. I just was curious as to whether you'd seen it or if we can get a copy.
Okay. So, uh, it looks like we have a game plan and hopefully we'll have a meeting in two weeks and we'll be able to make a decision on this then. Uh, all right. Moving along, we have a recommendation for reclassification of parcel at eight thirty-three Buck Lane from institutional back to R1A low density res- residential. And apparently several years ago, this property was R1A and was rezoned to institutional at the request of the Friends School of Havreford. Is there anyone out there that is, uh, here to speak on this particular matter? No? Okay.
I'm sorry, Angela. Did you mean, I'm sorry, were you asking if somebody was here to present? Cause this one actually-
Any members of the public or is this, this another Kelly presentation?
This is a Kelly presentation that Kelly actually did.
Oh, okay.
Um, so the property was previously zoned R1A, uh, prior to 2012 where the Havreford Friends School, um, purchased the property and requested or petitioned that the property be zoned institutional to fit their needs, um, as an institutional use. With the property being sold by Havreford Friends very recently and a property, the current property owner wanting to use the building or use the property again as a single family residential dwelling, um, and the property no longer being used institutionally. There is a provision in the zoning code that requests that the planning commission make a recommendation on what the appropriate zoning designation should be now that it is no longer, um, an institutional use. Uh, my suggestion, uh, I think is pretty, uh, pretty black and white, that it should revert back to R1A. It is what the surrounding, uh, district is comprised of, uh, aside from the institutional use. Um, and that's, that's pretty much it.
Okay. Uh, just for the board's information, I, I, uh, took a look at the plan just to make sure that if we did, uh, rezone this back to R1A, that we wouldn't be creating any non-conformities with the bulk of the area requirements for the R1A district. And in fact, we are, we wouldn't be. So, uh, in my opinion, this is kind of like a no-brainer. But again, does anybody have any questions or comments?
I'm in support of the rezoning.
Thank you, Maggie.
I am also in support of.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay.
Thanks for checking, Angelo.
Oh, no problem.
That's good.
Um, all right. Well then, uh, I will entertain a motion that we, uh, recommend the property at eight thirty-three Buck Lane to be rezoned to R1A.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any questions or comments on the motion? Kelly, would you take role, please?
Mr. Capuzzi.
Yes.
Mr. Reardon.
Yes.
Ms. Dobbs.
Yes.
Mr. Shannon.
Yes.
Mr. Feudamundo.
Yes.
Mr. Garrett.
Yes.
And Ms. Phillips.
Yes.
Okay. Next we have a, uh, various properties that are proposed to be added to the township's historic resource survey. And, uh, the information that Kelly sent to us included a copy of a report that was done on behalf of the historic commission, which recommended, uh, eleven various, is it right? Is eleven correct or is it twelve?
It, it's twelve.
Twelve. Okay. Twelve properties be added to the, uh, historic resource survey. I, I, I read the report and I have no, uh, issues with, with the properties that are being added. Uh, my only question would be whether or not the individual property owners are aware of what's happening here. Is there anyone in the audience that can answer that question?
Susanna?
I think the application said that they wanted this to happen.
Yeah.
So I'm Susanna Baruca. I'm the vice chair of the Havreford Township Historical Commission. Um, thanks for considering this tonight. Um, so the owners have not yet been officially notified and we are working on that with, uh, Kelly right now.
Okay. Do, do the owners have a, if, if for some reason they're not interested in being on the, uh, on the survey, can they opt out?
They will have an opportunity to, um, address that with, um, before the Board of Commissioners.
Okay. So, so the way things work is we, uh, we review the list and then the historic commission makes a formal request to the Board of Commissioners to, to include these. There's a public hearing and at that time, individual property owners have the right to come up and explain why they possibly would not want to be listed on the survey. Is that correct?
Exactly.
Okay.
Can I ask a question? Uh, in the last time that we created the original group of properties, when this all began, um, the Board of Commissioners at that time allowed those individuals who didn't want to do this to opt out. I have a strange feeling that that may be similar this time, but it's a different board. So if you, uh, reached out to the 12 different individuals or owners and asked them what their level of in, in interest was and what they, and would they be interested or would they like to do this? It might help you avoid just a lot of other problems, but that's just a thought and it's, and, uh, I, I just think that they should know in advance of this coming forward that their properties are on, on, uh, on that list. And yes, it's a great group of properties. So, and I know Darren Hayton has been waiting a long time for this property to go on.
So you're very familiar with this, Chuck, and I appreciate your comments. Um, the selection of properties in some cases was based on the fact that people have requested being added to the survey. And, and so there are at least two properties that I can think of. The, um, American Legion has been very keen to be listed in the historic resource survey and also the, um, Sears House on, uh, I can't think of the street. But at any rate, yes, we have taken that into a, into consideration and, uh, property owners absolutely will be notified prior to, uh, the Board of Commissioners meeting. And we intend to also speak with the Board of Commissioners individually, um, about, uh, properties in their ward. So it shouldn't come as a shock to anybody when this hits the agenda.
Right.
Thank you for the, uh, for the advice. Appreciate that.
Susanna, who owns the property, uh, that contains the Beechwood Amuse-McPark abutment?
That's funny. That's, that's a little bit of a, um, a red herring in a way. We believe that the property is owned by SEPTA and we don't anticipate any pushback because we assume that SEPTA will continue to do whatever they want to do without any consideration for Havreford Township. Um, but yeah, we, we, I, I think that it's, it's, um, it's SEPTA that owns that, that property.
But, but in the event that at some time in the future, they decide that they want to demolish that structure because of something that they want to do with the rail lines there. I mean, if they are on the register, they would have to go through a procedure in order to get approval for that, correct?
That I think, I'm, I have to admit, I'm not entirely sure that they would. Um, and actually I don't know if SEPTA is subject to, if they would be, if it's a federally funded project similar to, um, for example, the project, the Ardmore Avenue Bridge by Penn Dot. Um, if a project occurs adjacent to a historic resource, it kicks in a federal process called the Section 106 process. And it's possible that they would have to, if federal funding was involved, they would have to, um, consult with the township on what they propose to do.
Okay.
I think that really, you know, this is the, um, the remnant there is, um, is, is a really popular piece of local history and many people are very keen that we recognize it. Um, and I think we're going to do it and we'll just see what happens in the future.
Okay. But there's, there's nothing unique about its design or how it was constructed or anything like that. It's, it's purely historical significance, correct?
Yes. It's not architecturally significant. It's really significant as a remnant of the park.
Okay.
That's correct.
So I, I guess, uh, the bottom line in all this is that, um, we're being asked to recommend to the Board of Commissioners that they consider the 12 properties identified in the report to be included in the historic resource survey.
Right.
Okay.
Kelly, you're, obviously you'd jump in if, if need be.
No, essentially, um, the, the historic resource survey is also an overlay on the zoning map. So, um, this is in essence, a, uh, also a zoning map amendment, um, but just slightly different than what we did with eight thirty-three Buck. Instead of changing the zoning district, we are adding things to the overlay for the historic resource.
And one of the really good things that came out of what they're doing is, is instead of trying to change the zoning map for one particular property at a time, it's better to do it when you have a group of properties together so that you go through the process just once, if I am correct. Suzanne and, and Stacy, I think I am.
You're absolutely right. We, we, as Chuck mentioned, there was, um, a historic resource survey form completed several years ago. I hate to think how many by now, Chuck. Um, but we held it because, um, we wanted to, uh, try and bring them before you and before the Board of Commissioners in groups. And this is the first time we're going through the process. Um, if you're not aware, this project, um, was fun, fund largely funded by a grant that we received from the state of Pennsylvania through our certified local government, um, status, which made us eligible for the grant. And so we're hoping that we can continue to add properties to the survey, but this is the first time, and we will group them since it is a zoning overlay change.
And Kelly, um, since we are talking zoning changes and- And Kelly, since we are talking zoning changes in both these instances, eight three eight thirty three Buck Lane and these twelve properties, that has to be submitted to the Delaware County Planning Commission, right, for their review and comment?
Correct, it does. The eight thirty three Buck already has been. This has not, but it's shortly to follow. We will be holding or we we're looking to hold the public meeting in front of the Historical Commission with public notice to the property owners on the seventeenth and hoping to follow that up with the public hearing in front of the Board of Commissioners in June.
Okay, so
Does that also does that also include people around those properties like it has in the past? Or is that something that's different?
No, it it does. The the public notice does go to property owners within a hundred feet. So I have a lot of notices to get help.
Yeah, and and they they're both also advertised in a local newspaper, correct?
Correct, just like any public hearing, absolutely.
Right, okay. Okay, anyone have any comments or questions about the properties that are being asked to be added to the list?
Kelly, I just have a general question, and I can probably just go into the overlay language and read this. But briefly, can you just describe a little bit of what the inclusion in the overlay would mean for these properties in terms of maintenance or education and support on, you know, age appropriate updates and upgrades? And I mean, obviously, this isn't like a full historic district with a Harb. So I'm just curious if you can just kind of like elevator pitch on what the implications of the inclusion would be.
Sure, so our ordinance is anti, excuse me, anti demolition. And includes only the exterior portions of the properties. So generally, you know, just what you can view from you know, from from the outside. So it wouldn't include any interior changes, anything like that. But any sort of demolition of a architecturally significant portion of the building would require review from the planning, sorry, from the Historical Commission. Getting my commissions mixed up. And and then they would make a recommendation. I've worked with the Historical Commission long enough to know that they are not, you know, extremely strict on these things and are absolutely willing to work with homeowners on something that is aesthetically similar to what would be there historically and not require, you know, some sort of insane highly expensive material that would be actually historically correct. More than that, I mean, I'm sure Susanna or Stacy or Kathy can or Jack, I've got a lot of you guys here tonight. Could maybe add some more to that, but that's the gist of it.
The the ordinance also protects not only the structure, but any significant feature on the property itself, if there is some outbuilding or some other feature like a gate.
That's right.
Or an abutment, that's covered also. It also puts it puts a burden on on developments that occur within a hundred feet of a of a property.
That's the important one.
You know, if you tried to do a land development within a certain distance of a historic property, there's additional standards that have to be met in regards to that, and that that development goes before the Historic Commission for their review and approval. We had a case similar to or what just happened up on the sub two two lot subdivision that we did up on Homestead Road and and by the guest park. Pelham, yeah. That that development was within a hundred feet of a of a structure or a building that was on the survey, so.
And coincidentally, that structure was owned by the engineer for that project.
Right.
Wow, and coincidentally, eight thirty three Buck Lane is right next to another historic property, which is the Havreford Friends Meeting. So it's, you know, it it those two are, I think, the only ones that we have are actually that close.
Okay, anybody else with any comments or questions? Hearing done. Maggie, would you like to make a a motion for us regarding this application or this submission?
Sure, so I move that we recommend approval of the Historic and Resources, what's the name of it? The Historic Resources Survey and for the inclusion of the identified properties in the overlay district.
Second to that? I'll second that. Can I add a condition that with the condition that the affected properties be notified by certified mail prior to the public hearing for the for the project? Okay, Maggie, with that?
Yes, I am.
All right, any questions or comments on the motion? Kelly, could you take role, please?
Mr. Capuzzi.
Yes.
Mr. Reardon.
Yes.
Ms. Dobbs.
Yes.
Mr. Shannon. Are you muted? Yeah, you're muted.
Yes.
Mr. Fierdumondo.
Yes.
Mr. Garrett.
Yes.
And Ms. Phillips.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, and thank you for the information, ladies.
Thank you so much. Chuck, nice to see you.
Good to see you too, both of you.
Great to see you. Thank you very much.
Okay, last item on our agenda is review of our minutes from our last meeting, whenever that was. I think those meeting minutes went out today. Does anybody have any comments or questions regarding the minutes?
As amended by Mr. Capuzzi, I approve them. Not as not in the not as amended, just where they are now.
Where they are now, yes, thank you. Okay. All right, I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes from whatever, what's the date of that meeting? What are those minutes from? March what? Kelly, March what?
I'm looking, hold on.
Was it twenty fifth?
Twenty fifth.
March twenty fifth, all right, I'll make a motion, we approve the minutes from our March twenty fifth meeting.
I can.
I have a motion in second. I'm sure no one has any comments or questions. Kelly, take role, please.
Mr. Capuzzi.
Yes.
Mr. Reardon.
Yes.
Ms. Dobbs.
Yes.
Mr. Shannon.
Yes.
Mr. Fierdumondo.
Yes.
Mr. Garrett.
Yes.
And Ms. Phillips.
Yes.
Okay, before we adjourn, does anybody have anything they want to mention or bring up?
I just as a reminder, because there are five week or five Thursdays in this month, the next regular scheduled planning commission meeting will not be until May thirteenth.
Okay, that gives the rec department an extra week to get their information together, right?
Correct.
And I assume that regardless of what may or may not be on the agenda that month, we will meet just for that item, if that's necessary?
If that's necessary, correct. I am going to throw that out there, this out there, that I may not be in attendance, but I will make sure that everything is taken care of otherwise.
Okay. Okay, well, then I'll
I move move that we adjourn.
Anybody wanted to second that? We have a motion to adjourn in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing done, meetings adjourned, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Thanks, all, have a good night.
Good night.
Take care of that cold, Ange.
Yeah, right, thank you.
Take care.
Bye bye.